Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. This is the Monday, November 18th, 2019, regular Edina School Board meeting. And I'm going to turn to the superintendent for a quick overview of our agenda.
So we'll start with approval of the minutes from meetings and work sessions in the past. We'll hear from the members of the audience. Following that, we'll have a World's Best Workforce hearing, presentation by teaching, learning staff, and then the hearing to follow. We have four items on consent and in discussion. We will presenting our first discussion for the 2020-21 school calendars. Talk about a substitute teacher management system. We have four policy updates, an administrative presentation on the impact of changes to Policy 601, and for action, we'll have our auditors here to present the district financial audit, two other policies to approve, and then revised language for Policy 601 approval. And then, for your information, you have monthly enrollment reports, some other policy updates, and then the combined World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Report. So with that is the agenda.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th work session, the October 14th regular meeting, October 24th special meeting, November 4th work session, November 7th work session, and then November 12th special meeting?
Second?
Are there any changes?
Yes, I had a question. Sorry. I had a question on the minutes regarding our discussion with Mr. Heistad. And I noticed in the minutes it said that they'll meet, he'll meet with teaching and learning. And I thought we had actually talked about going out for an RFP. And then, just wondering, there'd been some talk about a committee being formed around this, and if you could give us any information on that.
The, with David Heistad?
Yes, or data and analytical analysis and getting community members involved.
So I think David Heistad is coming at some point, once we get our calendars aligned, to have him come to, I think it was to come to teaching and learning. So that was, that is still in the plan. I just think we haven't scheduled it because we've been, had other things on the agenda. And then, there are some, I've been talking to some individuals within the school district just on ideas around sharing data and what types of data would be best for our community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 14th work session, October 14th regular meeting, October 24th special meeting, November 4th and 7th work sessions, and the November 12th special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next, we have hearings from members of the audience. We do welcome community input at our meetings at seven o'clock. For those who have signed up to speak, we ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes or less. There are, I think, 11 different people who signed up, a number of them on the same policy. So we would ask that, to the extent that your comments were previously stated, that you try to abbreviate your comments, just so we don't keep going on. If you do have comments about individual board members, or employees, or staff, those should be directed to the superintendent and not brought up in the public speaking period. And then, the other thing is, we don't typically respond to comments made, but there will be follow-up. So the first person signed up is Nicole Danielson. Looks like you've got multiple places you could sit.
I know.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Nicole Danielson, and I have two kids in Edina Public Schools. I'm one of the leaders of the Dyslexia Parent Alliance, and I'm here tonight with Sonia Walters. I'm here tonight to voice concern over Policy 601 and its potential implications. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree from an Ivy League institution. I understand the need for academic rigor and challenge for our district's top performers. I've also been to enough PTO meetings, PLC meetings, board work sessions, and school board meetings to understand the financial constraints that our district faces. I can't imagine anything more important that our schools can do for our learners than teaching them to read. Third grade reading proficiency is a measure that is consistently called out because that is when students shift from learning to read to reading to learn. Studies from the NIH tell us that if a student isn't reading at grade level at the start of third grade, there is a 75% chance they will never catch up and read at grade level during their entire academic career. It likely goes without saying, but I'll explicitly say it here, if you struggle to read, it will impact all other subject areas. Last year on MCAs, Edina had 25% of third graders considered not proficient in reading. More staggering is that 63% of third graders who qualify for free and reduced lunch were not proficient. What does a school day look like and feel like for those kids? I'll ask you to think about how you felt when you attended our dyslexia simulation, and keep that in mind as you vote tonight. We have students going to Edina Give 'N Go requesting grants for reading tutoring. Based on their constraints, Give 'N Go can't even cover a full month of tutoring for those kids. We can't expect that all families have the luxuries of time and money to get their children to twice-weekly tutoring at the cost of hundreds of dollars a month if they need help with reading. This evening, our district will present a chart that was shown last spring with 2019 MAP reading growth by percentile. During that spring meeting, it was shared that Edina's graph is the opposite trend from what is typical. Our top-performing kids exceeded their growth targets, and our students lower than the 50th percentile did not. In the past year or so, our district has made some great steps towards addressing the needs of struggling readers. They have plans for more work in this area. You'll hear tonight the policy 601 would halt or postpone that progress. We have kids in our district that can't afford for that to happen. Is there an opportunity for more rigor in our schools for our highest-performing kids? Perhaps. But if that is at the expense of teaching our young students the fundamentals of reading, it would be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Byang Hong.
And this is the first time I address the board, and I'm a little bit nervous, but I will try my best. And I'm a longtime resident at Edina. My family benefit tremendously from the Edina education system. I know that all of your board member dedicate a lot of your own personal time to our community service, and we truly appreciate that. And my daughter and my oldest son are graduate from Edina High. They all go into a top STEM university and doing very well there. So I think Edina provide a good foundation for them to go further in college and later on their career. And we are, and my family are very grateful to do that. And I also know that Edina School District is in a friendly competition with our neighboring school district, especially with Minnetonka and Bloomington. All three are very good school districts, especially Minnetonka. And last year, Minnetonka have a significant more national merit semifinalist than Edina. And I also noticed that Minnetonka has a full-time separate gifted program, named Navigator, for elementary student, start from the second grade. And I also know that in Bloomington, they have a full-time gifted program called Ediment in the second and the third grade. And after that, there's a program, full-time program called Dimension Academy from the fourth to eighth grade. And the reason I know about that is that my youngest son is a second grader at Edina, and he was approached by two of the program and accept to one of them. And I know that some of my friends or neighbors, that they end up sending their kids to this full-time gifted program. And because of that, Edina School District lost revenues because they lost student. And sometimes, I think that Edina, we all know that we are very good at hockey, tennis, or swimming. We know that only a selective, where truly talented student end up being in the varsity program. But all of the student are look up to them and try to be one of them. So I think a highly visible, a highly visible and vigorous gifted program will serve the same purpose. Only, maybe only a few student can go to that program and benefit directly from the program. But all the student will look up to them and try to be one of them. So I think very hard should I send to the kids to the gift program, but I, at this point, I think that Edina have a lot of benefit, and I will try to voice my opinion to, and also, after the gifted program, the continuation of the revisit 601 program, I think will benefit the community in general, so that we have a continuation after the elementary or junior high gift program, we have continuation to the high school. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next is Youngjun Hao. Welcome.
My name is Youngjun Hao, and I have PhD in mechanical engineering. And first, I'd like to thank the opportunity for me to share my opinion, and I also want to show my great appreciation to all of you who have dedicated your time and effort to the school board. And by willing to serve, being willing to serve the community, and is a proof that you care about our students, you care about our school system, and you care about our city. All right, I thank you. And in my opinion, education policies should be dynamic. They should evolve and improve to address the ever-changing needs of our students. And also, we need to face the problems and challenges we may run into. Therefore, I applaud the effort for Policy 601 revision. Edina Public Schools has a very long history of excellence, but we should never become complacent. We must be paying attention to all the time to any areas that we may improve in, to learn the successful experiences from other schools, public or private, domestic or international. From a standpoint of equity, Edina Public School should dedicate to provide a good education to all and every student. May this student be a special needs student, a high achieving student, or most, more commonly, a student in the middle, because we have, most of the students are in the middle. Because every student is unique to their parents, to their family, every student deserve a good education. Every student should be challenged to grow up to be his or her best self. The purpose for education is not to meet state requirements. It is to promote, to promote a positive learning environment and encourage every student to grow to their full potential. It is widely believed that since the regular students meet the state proficiency requirements, they don't need any more assistance. This is a reason that we should redirect most of the resources to those students who need extra help to meet the requirements. While I'm not against the effort to help the students who struggle, I do believe the regular students deserve their fair share of attention too, since with some help, they may achieve even more than they currently do. Most of the families chose Edina as their homes because of the excellent public schools. If our schools only care about a small group of students, it is really not fair to the other students and their families. If these regular students are from affluent families, they may get extra help from outside of school. But what about those students who are doing okay, but their families do not have the means to get them extra help? Those students could, would just fall through the cracks of our system and never know that they could otherwise have gone much higher and achieved much bigger. More often than not, insufficiently challenging curriculum tend to demotivate the students since the content and the pace of study make them feel bored. And eventually, they may just lose interest in learning altogether. Currently, Southview Middle School offers some enriched classes. Why I mention Southview because I have an eighth grader right now in Southview. But these actually, enriched classes are not consistently, for example, enriched LA and their social studies are offered in seventh grade, but not enriched science. At eighth grade, enriched science was offered, but no enriched social studies. These enriched classes are also use the exact same curriculum as regular classes, which do not offer the rigor for motivated learners. My eighth grader son can often finish his work right in the class, and he feels pretty bored.
Mr. Who, could you please wrap up?
Okay, yeah, I'll be done. I myself actually grew up in a not-so-wealthy family. My parents did not have the resources or even the mindset to seek extra help outside of school. My education relied entirely on the public schools. Fortunately, the schools I attended put all their effort on promoting learning and academic excellence among all students. As a result, I became very motivated, and the schools provided all the help I needed to excel. Should they have ignored my needs, since I have always been an okay student, I would not possibly have gone all the way to get my PhD, and would never have been able to make an impact in the high-tech industry as I could do today. I support the proposed revision of Policy 601 that offer honor classes to those students who are motivated, who can thrive with extra challenge, and who can eventually make a much more significant impact on our society and on their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zayouh Yang. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. It's also my first time, a little bit nervous at the beginning. Thank you, everyone, for the time, help me to address here. My name is Xiaoyue Huang, people call me Philip. I live in Edina since 2017. I obtained a physics PhD degree in Michigan. I moved here, and I have two daughters, and older one is in fourth grader. First question here, what reminds you of Edina? Great neighborhood, convenient transportation, great, great school spots, hockey champion, soccer champion, go Hornets, go. I think it is most important that we also have a great, great, great school education. That's why I moved in here. That's why young families keep moving here. For a great sports team, what do we cheer for? A win, right. Then, how to get a win? I believe every coach will ask the players to bring their best into the game. It is the same for school education. We want to have our kids to bring their best to becoming better and achieve higher level. While the lower-level kids go for closing academic gaps, get helping, and higher-level kids should be allowed and rewarded with higher-level challenges. Last check, I want to remind everyone that more than 70% of our high school students achieved proficiency or exceeded the proficiency when they graduate. Seeking excellence for everyone, every level of kid is a strategy, but the most important in needs to be grounded with practice. The practice now, I think, when I read, is written in Policy 601 revision, thanks to several board members here to raise this up. I'm here to support passing the revision, as I really want to be proud for Edina's school and all-around achievements, and I want to keep our Edina excellent in the future. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next is Scott Meyer. Welcome.
Thanks again for letting me to speak tonight. My name is Scott Meyer, and I'm here to talk to you guys regarding Policy 601 and speak the importance of providing our children the ability to excel through coursework specific to their ability level. However, I feel that some context is needed so that you guys can understand where my motivations come from. My wife and I attended Edina Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, both Edina grads from '98 and '99, and we both felt academically challenged and were able to attend a college of our choice. I was fortunate enough to accept an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy, and if you're familiar with any of the service academies, you know that the academic rigor is pretty, pretty intense. However, I felt very, very prepared when I showed up there. The next 15 years, took our family all over the world, flying F-16s, defending our country. And with my last active duty assignment, actually ended up in Tucson, Arizona, living in the number-one school district there in Tucson, and had the opportunity to move. And when given that opportunity, my wife and I decided to move back to Edina based on our experience and the perceived academic excellence that we both knew about. At this point in time, I currently fly still for the Ministry of the National Guard, flying F-16s, and live locally, and obviously here in Edina, and working the Twin Cities. But through the past few years since we did move back, my wife and I have been very surprised to see the direction our schools have gone since nearly 20 years ago when we did graduate. We have three children here in the Edina School Districts, and our two oldest in grades six and three both utilize and benefit from the gifted and talented math and reading programs. We expect our youngest to follow suit based on their teacher inputs as well. Our kids thrive in challenging environments, and if you can believe it, they audibly complain about not being challenged enough in school and come home and say that they are bored. The need to provide outlets for kids who are capable of being challenged is not only necessary, but in my opinion, is for the best interest of every student in the classroom. I work daily in extremely diverse and challenging flying environment where split-second decisions, no kidding, could mean the difference between life and death. The process to get to this point took years of competition and evaluation among peers, so that's a real thing. If you don't think it is, it is. Amir, I did read your report. I appreciate all the detail that you provided. Ellen, thank you again for the PowerPoint. And the bottom line here is, I feel like I'm educated on the information that has provided by all of you, and this is not come lightly. I really do hope that you do vote yes for Policy 601 revisions. And finally, for the members of the board who think that there aren't families who are considering moving based on the decisions that you guys make on a daily basis, you're wrong, because it is very, very important. My wife and I are considering, you know, different options based on the direction that we are going, so it's a real thing. It's not an outcome that my wife and I want at all, nor did we ever imagine moving back to the city that we grew up in and that we love. So again, I'd ask that you please vote in support of the Policy 601 revision. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Heidi Teetz, and I've lived in Edina for 15 years. I'm here today to urge the board to approve the changes to Policy 601. Three years ago on the MAP tests, 65% of Edina students scored at the 80th percentile or better in both reading and math. Today, 50% of the students scored at the 80th percentile or better on those subjects, a 15% reduction. That reduction in this short time period is very concerning. Also, there have been comments that honors and enriched classes would benefit only a niche of students. However, when honors and enriched classes are offered, 1/3 of students elect to take them. I would argue that 1/3 is not a niche. And with 50% of Edina students testing at the 80th percentile in both reading and math, it suggests that many more students could benefit from successfully completing honors and enriched classes. I would like to ask the board why they might vote against a policy that could benefit 50% of Edina students. In addition, I'm concerned about the proposed approach of placing all students in a single class. It is not logical to expect that a teacher can meet the learning needs of our most challenged learners and our most accelerated learners, much less the needs of the forgotten middle with 32 students in the same classroom. A mind is a terrible thing to waste. We must expect our schools to elevate each and every student to their highest potential. It is not enough to say that our most accelerated learners will get it on their own. That is a failure of our educational system that does not provide learning to challenge our accelerated learners to their highest potential. In Edina schools, that is as many as 50% of our student body. Edina residents are taking their students out of Edina. I heard of yet another student considering leaving today. Because they are failing to meet the educational needs of their children, strong public schools are necessary to keep our country strong. I urge the board to vote in favor of the changes to Policy 601 in order to meet the academic needs of a large segment, 50% of our population, and to stem the tide of students leaving our district to get their academic needs met. I thank you for this opportunity to speak and for your public service.
Thank you. Next, next is Heather Teetz, and after that will be Maria Lauks. Welcome.
Heather Teetz, mother of a sixth grader and ninth grader. And I'm going to talk about data, because that's what I try and talk about. We've talked about why someone might not want to vote for 601. The concept that it's only a small percentage of our student population, I know 10% was thrown out there during the school board election, but depending upon the year, between 30 and 35% of the Edina kids test above 90th percentile. Again, depending on the year, between 25 and 35% of kids test between the 80th and 90th percentile. So between 50 and 65% are testing 80th percentile and above. So 50 to 65%, half to 2/3. That's not a small group of kids, right? 80th percentile means they're probably not served by being in the state standards, we're focused towards the standard class. So if we're going to meet the academic needs of 2/3 of our kids, then we need to be focusing on honors classes. Tracking. There's the concept that this is tracking. In Edina, anybody, any student can raise their hand and say, "I want to be in honors." You don't have to have a certain test score. You don't have to get a certain ACT score. You can just say, "Hey, today I want to do this." You didn't, if you didn't take honors in seventh grade, doesn't matter, you can take honors in eighth grade. So this is in no way tracking, so that's disingenuous. Okay? The concept of differentiation and that being okay, and we don't need honors courses. Okay, let's talk once again about the fact, we talk about formative and summative. Summitive is 90% of the grade. That's everybody taking the same test, everybody's taking the same things that focus for 90% of the grade. All this differentiation is that 10% formative. The kids figure out really quickly, "Hey, I'm going to take that pre-test, I'm going to take that final test, I'm going to get an A. All this other stuff over here doesn't really matter for my grade. I might choose to do it, I might not." Versus, if you sign up for an honors class that's at a different pace, a different content, you are then challenged and making that decision for the whole time in appropriate pace and challenge. Also, we are going to go back to getting the data for the ninth and 10th grade English, okay? We took away enriched classes in ninth and 10th grade English. We should be looking at the data of what happened. I say this every month. We know the MCA scores went down, okay? We had a one-year bump in ACT reading scores this year. Hooray! Let's see if that's a trend, okay? But we also need to be looking, these are pre-AP classes, what happened in the AP English test? We have data, we know fewer kids are taking it, maybe not getting the same percentage of 3s, 4s, and 5s versus the one year of data we have before this change. We need that five years of data. You can get it to us board members, you can get it to us administration, you can be transparent, you can share that with us, and we can do a transparent of what happens when you don't have honors classes versus what happens when you do. Okay? Cost and scheduling. We've talked about losing kids. I think on average, the last three years, we've been losing about 160-some kids on average over three years. The number this year was 120-something. We were able to get 90-some kids back through open enrollment. That 34, I think, kids that we lost, take that times 8,500, that's about $250,000. That goes a long way towards new curriculum if we're not losing those kids every year. And one of the biggest reasons was lack of rigor, that Edina residents are choosing not to send their kids here. And scheduling. Flex time, okay? I'm wrapping up. Last week, my child did friendship bracelets. Tomorrow, they're making crepes. I would trade that for an honors class.
After Maria Lauks will be Jennifer Wood. Welcome.
Thanks for having me here. It's going to be hard to follow Heather, she took some of my lines. I'm Maria Lauks, I'm a parent of three students at Edina Public Schools. I have been a member of the GT District Advisory Committee. I have been a member of the GT District Advisory Committee for four years and over that time I've attended all school board meetings related to advanced academics and student assessment. And here is why I support the changes to policy 601. As Heather and her mom pointed out, uh, over 50% of the students in Edina test above the 80th percentile on standardized tests in classes that focus on grade level standard will not be a good fit for many students. The need to provide advanced students with curriculum that is appropriate at the quote-unquote "level," complexity and pace is acknowledged in Minnesota State statute and is the first recommendation of the GT study that was approved by the board almost three years ago. Participants in the GT study included parents, teachers and administrators. EPS offers programming for GT and advanced students, however, the delivery of the programming differs greatly by elementary school and has gaps in the secondary grades. We are reaching the end of the three-year implementation phase for the GT study and the district has not provided a plan or a timeline to fill the well-acknowledged curriculum inconsistencies and gaps. The various enrichment off, options offered by the schools under the umbrella of personalized learning, flex time and embedded honors are not a replacement for appropriate curriculum delivered by a teacher. I applaud the school board members that are bringing forward the revisions to the policy 601 for delivering on a promise made to parents almost three years ago. One of the main arguments being made against policy 601 revision is cost. I'm not here to argue about cost projections, but any evaluation of the change needs to consider revenue as well as cost. More specifically, families are leaving the school district and citing a lack of rigor in advanced classes as one of the top reasons. That said, I really do not think the cost is behind the opposition to revising 601. I think the opposition is philosophical. I think many administrators and teachers view student ability grouping and offering honors classes as inherently bad and detrimental to students in lower ability groups. The efforts to make classrooms more balanced from a racial, socioeconomic and ability perspective, perspective are laudable, but only if students' needs are being met. When the ability range of a class becomes too high, less students get attention from a teacher that is appropriate to their level. EPS has implemented various curriculum and pedagogical changes to keep students together in the same classroom. However, there is no commitment to objectively measure the impact of these changes and there are indications that there are negative impacts, especially for students that are not proficient. The lack of objective measurement regarding the impact of policy changes is a big red flag for me. The other red flag is that parents that support advanced classes are regularly labeled as greedy because their kids are already successful, elitist and now segregationist by district employees on social media. If administration was interested in making sure curriculum was working well for students, they would embrace objective measurement and they would never put the needs of, uh, they would never pit the needs of different students against one another. The reality is that having multiple high-quality options for students will be a better fit for all students. It helps the students that are ready to move on to above-grade level work and it helps students that are struggling and need more time with grade-level material. Saying that this policy is being pushed at the expense of struggling students is not correct. As you consider your vote for policy 601, please remember that all students in the district deserve to have access to curriculum appropriate for them delivered from a teacher. Offering the same to everyone is neither appropriate or fair. Revising 601 to protect options for advanced students recognizes the legitimate needs of many Edina students and helps all students receive more appropriate instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. After, after Jennifer Wood will be Sarah Formata. Welcome.
Well, I know you have a long night ahead of you, so I'm going to keep it brief. Just to hit the bullet points, I encourage the board to approve the proposed changes to policy 601. I think that this policy change will honor what the stakeholders have identified as a priority of the strategic plan, and that's academic excellence and rigor. This policy change is not geared to help just a few. It broadens access to advanced learning opportunities to a wide range of students. I think the district's done excellent work in math and we see those kids fully develop their potential. And I love the thought that we would share that with students who have aptitudes in other areas like language arts and the sciences. I also like that the policy changes are structured with open doors. Students can self-identify as ready for more rigor and opt-in. It gives students and their families more choice where it matters, and that's in the core subjects. I don't understand the extreme opposition to this proposal by district leadership. They oppose adding honors level courses to core subjects while less than a year ago, they asked this board to add new courses like digital photography and soccer theory. It makes no sense to me to piddle away a few thousand dollars here and a few thousand dollars there for electives and then come to this community and say, we can't afford to give you honors level courses. So in sum, I encourage you to embrace this effort and allow more students to maximize their potential. Thank you.
After Sarah Formata will be Alenny Glaram.
My name is Sarah Formata. I have, I'm an Edina graduate and I have two sons that are Edina graduates. I am here partially about 601 because of the diverse needs of the 10th grade students and the failure of pre-AP 10 language arts to meet the needs of all the students. Because of that, I support 601. I've been sitting in school board meetings and work sessions for a couple of years and almost every single meeting, we've talked about that one class. We, you, um, it, it needs to be addressed. I'm going to argue with one of Heather's points where she said, you know, kids can just sign up for any class and they can take it. I will tell you, a student with an IEP is discouraged from taking any AP classes, even if it's their greatest heart's desire. They have all of the administrators in the high school opposed to it. All right, so the, the real reason that I'm here, um, I just passed out the narrowing the third grade reading gap, embracing the science of reading information. Um, there are extra copies in back if anybody wants them, or I can email the PDF if people would like to see it. This document, on page seven, 95% of elementary students, regardless of background, are cognitively capable of learning to read. And we're sitting at, what, 65% proficiency? Page 20, research confirms strong readers decode. We need to teach decoding. And it can't be that we're not going to teach decoding because we're supporting policy 601. It's not an either or, it's a both, it's an and, we need to do it all. And on page 38 and 39, there are three examples of success. Success is possible in reading and you need to start working with the science of reading and, and help these students and get them reading sooner rather than later. Thank you.
After Alenny Glaram will be Pamela Balabushka Ray. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name's Alenny Glaram and I want to thank you too for the opportunity to once again speak about policy, uh, 601. And I'm here to offer a little different perspective and talk about my concerns about the implementation timeframe about the policy. First of all, I do not believe the board has done a thorough cost analysis of the proposed changes. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that tonight, but I don't know if we actually have the hard details of cost, but rather guesses about where the money's going to come from. In a, in a time when we are challenged by a limited budget, I would like to think the board would be seeking a more detailed understanding of the financial impact of these changes to our district. At a previous board meeting where this issue was brought up as a discussion point, it was shared by a board member that a low-cost curriculum was found online as a way to reassure us that this would not be a costly venture. Is this the criteria that we will be using to select materials for our district and the changes to policy 601? I'm not only concerned with startup costs, but also the ongoing staffing costs, training and possible increased costs related to class sizes. Second, the timeline for implementing this plan, is this working? Okay. The timeline for implementing this plan by next school year seems incredibly rushed from a sheer practical perspective. Registration for next school year begins in February, so it would seem to me that these classes would have to be fully developed by then in order for students to register appropriately. How are students at all levels identified for these classes? Will students be opting in? And are opt-in students simply going to register for the new classes because they are marked as honors instead of understanding the fundamental differences in curriculum? I also believe that our administration will have very little time to address impact on scheduling, particularly as it will affect the middle school, not to mention if this is, will be enforced beginning in grade three as initially proposed. As a full board, you have not met with teaching and learning, the middle school or high school principals or teachers who will be responsible for this new curriculum. And frankly, I'm concerned that best practices of instruction will be put forward without what I believe to be this critical input. Finally, I just want to publicly say that I support and trust our administration and I support and trust our teachers. I do not believe that they have endorsed the changes to this plan and I think we need to think about what the message is that we are sending if these proposed changes pass. I urge you to pause and consider the many implications of the changes ahead. I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. After Pamela Balabushka Ray is Bethany Michelson. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm Pamela Balabushka Ray. I have two kids at EPS, one at the high school and one in middle school. Um, as you know, um, Edina Public Schools new strategic plan is being drafted. Priorities, the mission statement, action plans and resource allocations are being determined. The strategic plan has not been approved yet. An area in need of attention and investment is mental health. Students report intense pressure, rising stress, peer and parental judgment regarding achievement, little sleep and the feeling that going for help and support at school is difficult. At last count, there were 2,696 students at Edina High School. There are three, three social workers. That averages out to 898 students each. There are nine school counselors who each support 299 students. There's one school psychologist, two licensed school nurses, one co-located Frasier Mental Health Professional and a very part-time chemical dependency counselor. Our student support professionals are exceptional. They are devoted and work very hard under challenging circumstances. There is just no way that they can help all the students who need it with current staffing. There has been some creative and innovative thinking and support from the community to help with mental health needs in our schools. I hope that continues. That generous help should come on top of an already strong foundation. The strategic plan mentions, the draft, mentions student well-being and mental health a handful of times. Since our budget is extremely tight, difficult decisions will have to be made about what to fund. I hope that mental health will rise to the top of our priorities. I decided to speak tonight because I know that policy 601 will be discussed. The additional honors courses being proposed by a group of board members to add rigor to our curriculum will come at a large financial cost. The added pressure on students to perform may come with a mental health cost too. Teachers and student support staff should finally be consulted before investing in this policy. It should not be pushed forward before the strategic plan is finished and our district resources are analyzed in a holistic way that serves all of our students. Thanks.
Welcome.
Um, hi, I'm Bethany Michelson and I'm coming because I'm a mother of four children. I've, they've collectively attended Edina schools for a total of 44 years. I'd like to share why I believe the continuation and expansion of specific dedicated enrichment courses or the equivalent is so important for students in a word 601. What I believe is it's an opportunity, an open door, as someone else said. And I'd like to illustrate this with a pretty specific story. We've heard a lot of macro looks at that, that have been very worthwhile, but this is more specific. I'd like to summarize one of my students' stories. Earlier in his school years, he was diagnosed with dyslexia and his difficulties with reading, spelling and memorizing math facts made many parts of the curriculum difficult. He focused on learning to read, write, spell and practice math facts. This meant working on reading every day of the year, taking summer school math, practicing math facts all summer long, and it included setbacks such as retaking a math class. But he wanted to take chemistry so he could continue to work on math. He went to additional math labs, his interest and motivation to take more challenging classes became stronger and stronger, and yet college-level work seemed daunting. This is when enrichment classes and dedicated teachers opened a door of opportunity. They gave him the opportunity to choose to challenge himself in something he was interested in, and yet the stakes were lower than in college. Building background knowledge and vocabulary and slowly working up to harder academics with support is important for dyslexics and English language learners and many other students to be able to succeed in college-level courses. Looking back, I believe these enriched classes provided vital steps that allowed him to gradually increase the challenges he took on and finally to enroll in AP Chemistry. Without that helpful on-ramp to greater rigor, I have noticed that students can be very stressed and overwhelmed by AP courses. Enriched classes, which any student can choose to opt into, allows motivated students to increase their capability in a subject. I believe this sequence of enriched classes, which leads to a wide variety of AP classes, provides one of the best opportunities that Edina offers. We are noted for the breadth of AP classes that students can take and that many students actually pass their AP tests. Did you know that it is possible to earn over a year of college credit through these AP courses? This is a significant opportunity. All the next steps of education will have limited numbers of students who will be accepted and higher education will come with a high cost. Offering enriched classes for all students who are motivated enough to sign up and to do the work is an unlimited opportunity. We can continue to offer this valuable opportunity for our students. I work at a school that's 75% student of color and 70% free and reduced lunch. Every day, I see talented, capable students and their parents who desire a better opportunity for their children. I see children who overcome setbacks, language barriers and a variety of challenges to be in a setting that is academically challenging. Considering these students and their potential, I don't understand how people could assume that an enriched class would necessarily be segregated. Edina is a district that has been viewed as one of the best academic districts in the state. Students from all cultures and backgrounds come here for an opportunity. These students are capable, they're motivated and they're choosing to be in a school with high academic standards. I am confident that there are I am confident that there are many students who are equally as motivated as my son. Enriched classes provide a vital on-ramp to college-level classes. Why would we deny students that opportunity? Thanks.
Thank you. So that completes hearing from members of the audience. I want to thank everybody who came up and spoke. It's always helpful for the board to hear community input. So thank you again. We do have a number of staff recognitions tonight. First, there's a combination of the special ed team at Highlands Elementary. This was an email from a parent saying that how impressed and appreciative they are with the special ed team at Highlands. Her and her husband walk out in awe on how much support their child is getting from the team and how good they are at what they do. Then there's a combination of Jolynn Gamble, who's a teacher at Creek Valley Elementary, and an email from an Edina High School student. And he apparently had her for GT reading in fourth and fifth grade at Creek Valley. And he said that "I realize how much you've shaped my worldview and helped me grow." Goes on by saying, "I think the way you taught the class inspired a joy of learning and a sense of morality that I've carried throughout my life. I don't remember much from the past two weeks, much less my elementary school years, but I do know that your style of teaching was super impactful on me, so thank you." Then there's a combination of Mary O'Keefe, Randy Baca, Kristen Bennett, and Shannon Stephen, teachers at Cornelia Elementary, and a note from a parent. "I just wanted to send you a quick note to let you know that yet again you have managed to place our children with such amazing teachers. Thank you for leading an environment where great teachers want to be. It means so much to us that our kids are doing well in school and want to be there." And we thank all of our teachers and our staff. Next, we have the World's Best Workforce Hearing. So we shift sort of from a meeting to a hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Randy and Donna and their team to do the presentation of World's Best Workforce, which is a piece of legislation that requires school districts to report the outcome of goals.
So Randy, let me just jump in for a second. Because this is a hearing and not a meeting, there is an opportunity for audience members to ask questions unlike the normal board meeting. So again, you know, if you have questions, wait till appropriate time or wait till the end, and then feel free to step in.
Yeah, just to add to that, we'll do the presentation first, and then we'll take the questions right after that presentation.
Is this working? Got it? Good evening. My name is Randy Smalls. I'm Director of Teaching Learning here at Edina Public Schools, and I'm excited for our team to be here this evening to talk about our World's Best Workforce Achievement and Integration Report. So thank you Chair Wallen Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, our board members, and our community members, and our audience for being here today. What we're going to present to you is a little overview of our World's Best Workforce Goals, some of our strategies for improving those goals, and you'll hear from different workforce, World's Best Workforce Committee members regarding different elements of that legislation and some of the work that's going, that is happening across Edina Public Schools. On the second slide, we recognize the World's Best Workforce Committee members. There's quite a few members, both teachers and parents and community members, and we have higher ed, and we have students that are part of this particular group. And this district committee really reflects the diversity of the district and its school sites and includes a variety of different individuals, but I'd like to highlight some that are here this evening and will be presenting. So we have Carolyn Jackson, who is sitting next to me, who is a World Best Workforce member and a committee member and has presented in the past on this topic. We have Donna Roper, our Director of Research Evaluation. We have Mary Mandelfeld, our Director of Equity Enrollment. We have Caroline Linden, who is our K-12 Literacy Specialist Teacher on Special Assignment. We have Andy Beaton, our High School Principal. Uli Rodriguez, our multilingual specialist at the district. We have Leah Byrd, who is our Early Childhood Program Coordinator. And then we also have some other guests from the high school. We have three of our science teachers who will be speaking tonight about some of the practices they've been implementing to close some of the access and opportunity gaps in science at the high school. We have Steve Sanger, one of our science teachers. We have Jeff Kraus and Eric Burfine from the high school. So thank you, everybody, for being willing to come and speak this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn Jackson to speak a little bit about the history of the legislation of World's Best Workforce and some of the parameters that guide the work of that committee.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody. I don't know how to turn my head. I'll address the board. I don't mean to be rude, turn my back on you. The World's Best Workforce was legislation passed in 2013 to look at closing achievement gaps. And the reason that this legislation was passed, there's a nice summary on the Department of Education website. For Minnesota to be competitive, we must have students who are career and college-ready, poised to lead the state's workforce. This is important for a number of reasons. Our population is aging. 70% of jobs will require more than a high school diploma by 2018. We don't have an adequate number of qualified candidates to fill many good-paying jobs. The fastest-growing segment of our future workforce is students of color, and they currently have the state's lowest graduation rate. And Minnesota has one of the worst black-white achievement gaps in the country. And so the point of this legislation is to bring people up into the workforce ready to work when they graduate or go to college. The legislation underwent some significant changes in 2016. It added another component. There were originally five components and added a sixth component. I'll go over that in a minute. It also aligned a lot of reporting that districts have to do. So rather than sending in six different reports, they can just send it in as the World's Best Workforce. If you want to go to the next slide, these are the components that were added in 2016 that we're not going to really be going over that tonight, but all these reports are now streamlined together to try and cut back on some of the burden on the districts. So on the next slide, these are the areas that the World's Best Workforce covers. We want to have, see progress in school readiness. That's all kids ready for kindergarten. Everyone's reading well by third grade. Closing academic and achievement gaps. And part of that is the 2016 legislation added Achievement and Integration Progress Summary. All students ready for, to graduate for high school. Attain college and career preparedness. And then the, also from the 2016 legislation, equitable access to excellent teachers and to diverse teachers. So these are all things that the state is requiring us to do. It's a lot of stuff the district was already doing and a lot of districts around the state, but the legislature wanted to streamline this so that we're all pulling together to bring that workforce ready for the next century, or ready for 2018 and on. So we're there, but going forward. So that's what the legislation background is.
Thanks, Carolyn. The next slide is just kind of a highlight slide of the goal areas. And for the next few minutes, you're going to hear from other members more details about each of these goal areas. But what I, what you can obviously see is at a high level where we met our targets and where we have not yet made progress, so we'll talk more in detail about each of these. But I do want you to know that we use objective, external standardized measures to monitor our progress in each of these areas. The school readiness area is always a work in progress. It's the one area that the State Department doesn't really have any outcome measures from districts yet. And then, of course, the goal-setting process has evolved a little bit over time, and we can now use multiple measures, local measures and state data. So that is what we're doing in each of these areas, and you're going to hear more about that as we go through the presentation.
Hi, everybody. Is it on? Hi, everybody. Well, it's really nice to be here this evening. My name is Leah Byrd. I'm the Early Childhood Programming Coordinator, and I'm excited tonight to be able to share a little bit with you about goal area number one, which is school readiness. The first thing I want to share is the definition that we have up here says, "School readiness relies on multiple stakeholders coming together to create experiences so that all levels of early learning are ready to support and promote the whole child, including their social and emotional well-being and academic success." What's interesting about school readiness, as Donna sort of spoke to, is that it has a number of different definitions. And oftentimes, when you think about school readiness, we think about getting the child ready to come to school. And we really want to kind of reverse that a little bit to think about the school being ready for the child. And so what do we do as a system to help kids when they get here and that they are ready to go on to kindergarten in the following year? So I'm going to speak a little bit about our goal statements. Thank you. So we had four different growth goals downstairs in the Early Learning Center, and the first one was getting all kids ready for, getting all kids screened for kindergarten. As you know, the state of Minnesota has a law that all children need to have early childhood screening before they enter kindergarten. And a goal of 100% of the incoming kindergarteners screened is actually pretty successful. We're proud of that because, as you know, and as we've heard tonight, many people move to Edina for the school system, and we oftentimes have that last month of summer where there's a lot of transition. So families are moving into homes and setting up their households and getting registered in Mary's office for school and not always thinking about, oh, and I have to do this early childhood screening as well. And so we're really proud to share tonight that we did screen all incoming kindergartners this school year. And I want to share a little bit about the PYRAMID implementation model. I've been fortunate enough to share with you before what the PYRAMID model is, but just as a recap, PYRAMID is a grant that we were awarded. It's a five-year grant downstairs, and we were awarded. And PYRAMID is a curriculum or a system in which the teachers and all staff are highly trained to help kids in their social-emotional skill sets so that they are successful learners in school. And our very first year was last year, and we had just a few of our four-year-old teachers that were going through the training. And we're really happy to share this year that all of our four-year-old teachers and all of our three-year-old teachers are going through the intense PYRAMID training. So they had two days of training during workshop week. They have a couple of different trainings throughout the school year. Every classroom teacher has a coach that goes in and helps support the work that they're doing and watches and observes them. They have a classroom observation tool as well. So we're excited that that's really going well downstairs. And then the last two goals talk a little bit about our early literacy and our early numeracy, and the goal being 60% or more of students make typical or aggressive growth in early literacy or in early numeracy. And you can obviously see that we beat 60%. So again, I'm glad to share that we had 76% for our literacy and 71% for our numeracy. Okay, and so then the next slide talks a little bit about what are some of the improvement strategies that we're doing for our youngest learners so that they are ready to come to school and primarily that we are ready for them to come to school. So it's sort of under three different categories. Our partnerships that we have, our professional learning that we're doing, and also the systems and practices. And I'm not, because my time is limited, I'm a talker, but I've been told 30 seconds per slide, I'm going to just touch on a few of them. So the first one I want to share with you is the Pre-K-K Collaborative Group. That's a really big deal. For a long time, we didn't have a lot of communication between the early childhood level and our K-12 world. And so about four years ago, we started having our four-year-old teachers meet with our kindergarten teachers. They meet every six weeks. Every six weeks, I have a wonderful agenda, and they hijack it and talk about what they want to talk about, which is just fine. We talk about early literacy. What are we doing in early childhood? What are they doing in kindergarten? How do they align? What are the state standards? Same exact thing with early numeracy. Interestingly enough, we had a meeting last week, and the question within that group was, "What does kindergarten readiness mean to you in the capacity of the hat that you wear?" So that's a really fun group, and that's really opened the doors for lots of different partnerships. And then the other thing I just want to touch up on the list of partnerships is that we have our Beyond ECFE. And again, I've shared earlier with you that about three years ago, we did our Parent Education Program Study where we asked the parents of our community, "What do you want when you think of parent education?" And, you know, many, many people say all the time, "Well, I love ECFE. That's kind of where I met my tribe. Those are the people that really helped me figure out this parenting thing." But the other thing that we heard a lot of is, "I can't participate in the traditional model of ECFE anymore, but I want parent ed." And so we brought Beyond ECFE, where we offer a lot of different classes for parents in our community who might not be in the traditional ECFE class. We have Families in Digital Devices, which is an online class. We have a Girls in Friendship class, a Parenting Your Child with Special Needs class, numerous book studies that we do. They've been really, really popular, and we've seen our community like them. Professional learning, like all teachers in the district, the early childhood teachers do participate in PLCs twice a month. As you know, I just spoke to, they have their PYRAMID implementation training that they do. Teaching Strategies Gold is our standardized assessment that we use down in early childhood. And just this fall, we had a pretty in-depth training. One of the important things is that we all have the same fidelity when implementing. Teaching Strategies Gold. And then lastly, I'll just share a little bit about systems and processes. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of years to really align with the district, make sure that we follow the district calendar, that our teachers participate in district-level professional development opportunities, just all of those different collaborations. So happy to share a little bit with you about goal number one. If Donna asks, that was three minutes.
Hello, I'm Caroline Linden, and I'll speak to the slides for goal number two, which is All Third Graders Reading at Grade Level. So on this first slide, you can see that there are three ways that we're measuring success for this goal. The first one is MCA proficiency. The second is MAP growth, and the third is MAP proficiency. So for goal number two, last year, third graders in Edina grew by 5.5 percentage points, and so the goal of 3.5 percentage point growth was surpassed. And on the next slide, you'll see the graph shows the winter 2018 MAP results compared to the 2019 results on the right side of the slide. The growth scores are shown in green, and the proficiency scores are shown in blue. And both of those targets were met. We surpassed our growth goal by 3.3 points and just a little bit for the proficiency on MAP. As far as continuous improvement efforts, the district continues to analyze needs and listen to stakeholders, and as a result, Sunday Essentials has been added to all K-2 classrooms. We are also continuing to advance professional development in the area of reading assessment to help teachers identify needs for all of their learners and create plans for them to make progress. Also, we have ongoing professional development based on a menu of options, some choice-based by teachers and some that might be required on our District Professional Development Day in February. PLCs continue to support all our learners through collaboration. And embedded professional development is found throughout the elementary teacher literacy materials, which means there are embedded videos and resources that teachers can use at point of need at any time to further their own professional development. And lastly, we've added some additional materials. Again, I mentioned Sunday Essentials in grades K-2. And in addition, we are supporting iXcel in the older grades to make sure that students have access to extra time or additional practice or acceleration if they would like. And that's my goal, or the goal.
I think I get to do goal three. I'm going to start it, and then some other people are going to chime in here. So as Carolyn Jackson mentioned, the World's Best Workforce, one of the primary goals is really addressing achievement gaps. So this is goal area three, and we set some pretty rigorous targets for ourselves in this area. And you can see that we assert that we have not yet met our goal in this area. We have a lot of things that we wanted to do. So the goal statements are around really monitoring our lowest-performing student groups. And in Edina, unlike, or not unlike any other district, the lowest-performing student groups are our Black and African-American students, our Hispanic-Latino students, American Indian students, our free and reduce, our students who receive free and reduced-priced meals, as well as our non-native English-speaking students. Those are really our lower-performing student groups as measured by these standardized tests. And so we set some rigorous targets there. Because we really want to fairly look at English acquisition for our EL students, we decided to use the access test, you know, as well as using the MCA test for the other low-performing groups. So the next slide, you see where we met our five-point proficiency goal. We actually met it in science. We made progress in reading, not as much as we would have liked to. And, you know, to close achievement gaps, you do have to accelerate the proficiency rates. And so you can see we didn't meet our five-point goal in reading or math, but we did in science. As for free and reduced-priced meal students as well, we met it in science. And we have some science teachers here tonight to kind of just really briefly mention a little bit about what they did. I think the work that they did this year was amazing. We saw lots of great We saw lots of great progress and I'm just going to let them tell their story on that.
Sure. My name is Eric Burfine and I teach AP Environmental Science and General Biology at the high school. I'm here with Jeff Kraus, who teaches enriched biology and general biology, as well as Steve Sanger, who teaches human anatomy and AP biology. We represent all three levels of biology that is given at the high school. So the thing that we are the most proud about is that every single one of these groups saw increases in their scores. Especially if you look at like the goals, the ones that we're targeting, the African-American, Hispanic, Latino students receiving free reduced prices, or free and reduced lunches, they all saw very large increases in their test scores if we just look at the MCA scores. We kind of give a credit to two different levels. People like to focus on, we made the MCA test worth something, which obviously gave the students some motivation. I think that's been presented to the board before. Students that achieved a meet or exceeds had the option of having the MCA score be worth all of their semester final exam for second semester. Those that were proficient or does not meet, then half of the MCA score went to their final exam and then they took our own final exam from our classes as well. So we viewed that as an opportunity for voice and choice with the students. They could choose to study a month in advance, especially their junior year where there's a lot of academic rigor and looking at colleges and all that kind of stuff. It gave them, in some ways, relieved of some of the stress. But also, we could identify those students with a month left in school that really needed our help. And so we used our flex time, we used time to pull them aside to really work on those students as well. The second part, though, I would say even more important, is that our biology team has been together for four or five years. So we had, our collaborative team has worked really well with each other. We have really worked hard to have common objectives, essential standards, working really rigorously on writing and technical writing. We do a lot of innovative and creative things within the classroom that bring in some of the higher level of skills like gene technology and CRISPR. And we have students at all levels look at those different skill sets. So I feel like we've challenged our students, we've reached them at that level, and we've given them an opportunity to show what their knowledge is actually at in a valid assessment. But realistically, we've made a point to have like strong connections with each and every one of our students. And I think that's where we, as a biology team, pride ourselves the most. So, thank you.
And then I think Uli is here to talk about the next portion. Yep?
Yep. I'd like to give you just a very quick review of who multilingual learners are and what ACCESS is. Last year, our department decided to start using the term multilingual learners instead of ELs because we believe that MLS recognizes the unique linguistic and cultural skills that students have and we see them as an asset and not as a deficit. And ACCESS is a standardized test taken annually by multilingual learners that measures four things, measures listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Students show proficiency or access the English program if they score 4.5 in this test. Each multilingual learner of English has an annual goal to make progress towards English proficiency. And at the same time, each district has its own goal to help each learner reach that goal. As you can see in the slide, the goal of the Minnesota Department of Education is that by 2025, 85% of multilingual learners of English will be meeting the growth target. Even though our district's learning target number grew by 2% compared to the previous year and is about the state level, we did not, as a district, we did not meet the goal of the 5.5 growth that we had set off for last year. So there's still a lot of work that we all need to do to help our multilingual learners achieve their target.
So Achievement and Integration is now part of the World's Best Workforce. That happened in the 2018-19 school year. The Progress Support for ANI is now part of World's Best Workforce. Really, the three goals of Achievement and Integration is increasing racial and economic integration, reducing achievement disparities, and increasing access to effective and diverse teachers. When you see the next slide, you will see that we have not quite met our goal. These goals were written in 2016 as part of a three-year plan. So we are now in the last year of our three-year plan. We will begin in December writing our 20 to 23 plan. At the time, in 2016, the end of 2016, we really felt like a goal of increasing our third grade reading by 8% was not too large, yet we're not there. Also, having all students ready for college and career as measured by the ACT. We are at 63%, but our goal was to get it to 70%. Finally, what are some of the, what are some of the strategies that we have been using, specifically even out of ANI? So out of the Achievement and Integration budget, which is about $1 million, probably 86% or more go to direct student support. And those are things like math bridge classes at the high school. We have reading support at both middle schools. Looking at the scores last year and then at our ANI budget, we took some very deliberate attempts and funding and put it in our, all six of our elementary schools. So we increased the funding, our elementary schools were getting to serve our students that were behind grade level. So we took money out of ANI for that. In addition, though, we offer AVID, College Possible. Our liaisons are also part of that, which help with the family engagement. One of the professional developments we pay for out of the Achievement and Integration budget is the cultural and linguistic responsive teaching.
I'll just add to that a few other pieces around professional learning that is key work and is really critical to ensuring success of students. The state of Minnesota puts out standards that are required for all students. And so some of the ongoing work that we do is to just make sure that as those new standards come into the system, that our courses and our grade levels are aligned to those standards, that our assessments are aligned to those standards, that we have plenty of time to do professional development with our teachers around those new standards and what they mean. We also do a significant amount of technology integration. And the thing about technology is that it has to help you do things that you were not able to do before. That's when technology really leverages, or that's when we can really leverage technology to improve the educational environment. If it's simply a replacement of something we could do without the technology, there's no power or no gain in that. So the things that we're looking for is how technology can do things that we can't, we weren't able to previously do. English language learning strategies and some of the work that we've done with teachers around that. And maybe Uli, can you speak for just a second? Well, more than a second. The coaching English for the mainstream at Hamlin, the work that we've been doing there with some of our teachers?
Yeah, so Hamlin University got a grant through the US Department of Education to train English as a local language teachers, teachers who have a license like myself. So last year, we had three of our teachers sign up to be certified to be coaches. So there are three schools that are participating this year, the two middle schools and countryside. Our goal is that for next year, we'll have all the schools, all the teachers trained. And what our teachers are doing, these three teachers are doing is they're, it's part of a cycle. They meet with a teacher, set up some goals, then they observe the teacher, and then they give feedback. Because some of the challenges that many, some of our teachers have is that they don't have the strategies to work with students who speak a language other than English. So hopefully, this project will help them, give them the skills that they can teach students who are bilingual or multilingual.
Thank you, Uli, for your leadership as well in that and leading that with teachers. And with that, we'll turn goal number four over to Andy Beaton.
Good evening, everybody. Goal four is around college and career readiness. And goal statements this year are tied to ACT college readiness benchmarks, the category where you look at all four indicators and the goal to have that increase by two points. And also increase the percentage of students meeting ACT STEM benchmarks by two points. And we were glad to meet those goals this year. On the next slide, if you look kind of the trend line, they are broken down by subject area. And you can see the trend where we are in terms of college readiness benchmark. And you can see this year where we had that increase in all four. You can also see the indicator next to it of the state average, which Edina obviously did very well with students meeting college readiness benchmarks, clearly, but always room to improve. The next is looks at STEM. We were looking for a two-point gain. We had a three-point gain. Again, that's in math and science on our ACT, those STEM benchmarks. And you can see there that we increased and exceeded our goal for this year. And then the next slide is looking at advanced placement participation. We've had steady advanced placement participation. I was excited this year that we had the most students participating in advanced placement in our history, at least that Donna and I can find, and a steady number of exams that are given, and also a high degree of completion and success. The most students, the most students that we've seen, not exams. We have an exam year that was a little bit higher, 2,500. This last year, we gave 2,487 exams. But in terms of the number of students participating, we had a high number of students participating this last year. And with that 86% success rate, so getting a three, four, or five on the exams, which is, gives the opportunity for college credit or advanced standing. And so how do we do some of these things? I think you heard from our science teachers to talk about really strong alignment to state standards and core competencies. It's why, you know, our biology team has been so successful. They are very aligned and focused in their instruction. Some things that we have done with the schedule change to have four-year plans built through the MYAP program where students are really registering for their four-year program when they're coming into the high school, doesn't mean it can't change, but really looking ahead of what they might study after high school. Some awareness around social-emotional skill development, again, built within our schedule and the advisory program. Access is always an issue about advanced placement course offerings. We have open access, but we still need to do more recruiting and encouragement of students to take on those challenges. Some things that we've done in the College and Career Center in partnership with families is the access program. We have a dedicated college and career counselor that works with parent volunteers to really bring in their expertise. It's one of the things that was important to me when I came to Edina is to rely on and use the skills of our community. And then a growing number of partnerships with higher ed. You have some teachers in the room here that teach concurrent enrollment classes. Those are college classes that are taught within the high school. Again, bringing in career speakers, alumni feedback, a new partnership that we are working on right now with the Rotary. So again, all these things tied to post-secondary planning.
Thank you, Andy. I will take goal number five to speak for a few minutes about all students graduate. The definition for this goal is all students attending school in Edina will graduate from high school. We do have very high graduation rates, but one of our specific goal statements was to increase by three points the percent of multilingual learner students who graduate. And we did meet that goal this last year. In terms of evidence of that goal and all students graduating, graduation is reported one year in a year. So we wanted to see the graduation rate of multilingual English learners increase. And the statewide vision is that all student groups meet the 90% graduating threshold. And we are there in every group except for our special education students at this time. So some of the action steps around that are related to some of the previous action steps that our other speakers have shared already. Going into 2020, the state is prioritizing equitable access to excellent and diverse teachers as an important goal for World's Best Workforce. So using Minnesota Department of Education's 10 Commitments to Equity, they are focusing on number eight, value people, which is really about growing our teachers and our leaders and developing people to increase teacher diversity and to ensure equitable access to the best teachers across our system. So if we look at this slide and we say, well, you know, what kind of credentials do our teachers bring to the table? You can see as you look to the far right there, that's the percent of teachers with advanced degrees in our school district. And in Edina, we believe we have some of the best data when it comes to these metrics. 97% have more than three years of teaching experience. We're using licensed teachers nearly 100% of the time, and more than 83% of our teachers have advanced degrees. In addition, we are working on a partnership with the University of St. Thomas to Grow Your Own. And what that is about is taking people within the organization, including students, and figuring out how can we create a path to increase the diversity of our teacher workforce. So with that, I'm going to take us to the last slide. And thank you for giving us time to share this presentation with you. And since this is a public hearing, we will open it up for questions from the audience at this time.
So I think addressing the achievement gap is a really wicked challenge, right? It's a problem everywhere. And I think that you heard a lot from people up here this evening, some of the improvement strategies that they're using to try and address getting kids more motivated and engaged. And so, I mean, every standardized measure that we have gives us a very similar picture of this very persistent achievement gap. So from a data perspective, that's what I can tell you. From a how do we close it? I think it's, I really believe the work our science team did, that we can learn from that. There's some engagement and motivation that they did with all kids, but it really significantly benefited kids in those student groups as well and made progress on the gap. That's my perspective. I don't know if anyone else wants to answer.
So I'm going to go back to this slide and talk for a second about learning. So traditionally, in school systems, learning has been the variable and time has been the constant. So if you think about that for a minute, the way school is structured is that we give everybody about the same amount of time to learn the content. But we know that kids learn at different rates and we know that kids start in different places and some learn much faster around specific concepts and some take more time. And so one of the things we're trying to do as a system is figure out how to flip that, how to make learning the constant and time the variable. So how do we flex time during the school day, given a set amount of time? How can we flex the time in that day so that we can keep learning as the expectation? High levels of learning for all is the expectation and the amount of time kids need to get, kids need to get there. So additional time is one of our key designs on making sure that there is time during the day where we can intervene when students are either struggling in math, or struggling in reading, or struggling in writing, or struggling in science or other areas, and be able to intervene during the school day. We've also added significant supports around reading, writing, and math at different levels. One of the, we've incorporated some technology this year that helps provide feedback to students around where they're at in terms of progressing on standards around reading and math through iXcel. We continue to train teachers on different strategies that will help reach learners that maybe we haven't reached as significantly in the past. We are trying to be more culturally responsive in connecting to kids. So both of those things are really centered around relationships. And we know that we're in this business because we love kids and we know that building relationships with kids pulls them in, motivates them, gets them excited about what we're learning. We had a great ceremony prior to the board meeting tonight where students were recognizing that particular element and recognizing the importance and value of relationship in what we do. So we know that those are really key, important elements that make a difference. We have a lot of work to still do and we can't do it fast enough, but we do have plans to continue to improve in these areas. And we've seen some successes, but we need to replicate more of that success.
I feel like maybe I can bring a different perspective in as well as being a teacher in the classroom every day. When I walk around the high school, every teacher cares about every kid. I mean, you really see that in the way that we are working with kids. We have office hours before school and after school. We have flex time. Students have student prep and they are, at least in my class, I let them come in and retake tests during
and retake tests during that time. It used to be I had a prep period, and now I would say four out of five days I have a student in my room during my prep period. So it's truly like the connections that we make, and it's the dedication that I see in our staff that really to work with every single kid, make those strong connections, so.
So, yeah, I think you guys have done a great job, including administrators and teachers. That's great. But I'm thinking like, maybe instead of talking about closing the achievement gap, should we just talk about, just move everyone up a bit? Progress, we talk about progress instead of like achievement gap. So if you just push everyone up a bit, so we don't care about the difference, but we care about everyone's goal, just making progress along the way, I think probably that's a better goal. Because students are different, everyone is different. Like whatever I do, I can't be Einstein, that's for sure, and I know that 100%. So people are different, so we have to act on it.
Yeah, I think it's such an important point to talk about all students growing, which is, I think, what you're referencing to, and that's absolutely an important, critical element of the school district. And students have to meet basic performance thresholds. And so in the performance area is sometimes where we have that gap that we have to focus on. In the growth area, we sometimes have gaps that we have to focus on because students aren't growing as much as is expected. So I totally agree with what you're saying. It's an "and," not an "either/or" though.
Along the same lines, there was a slide I believe just previous to this that I think I misread, maybe I did not, but it just had to do with, there was like a desired eight-point gain for reading in third grade, but it was actually a drop over three years, is that true?
Yes.
That was that slide?
Yes, that would be true. That would be correct.
Okay, I was just asking.
No, it's the, it's the, that's the next one, it's, go ahead, it's under A and I. The next slide there. So when we wrote the plan in 2016-17, the proficiency for third grade reading was 78.5. We set as a goal to get to 87%, and this past year, we're at 75.5.
Mary, those aren't the same students, right?
That's what?
Those aren't, that's not measuring the same students.
No, it is not measuring the same students.
No, it's a cohort, a cohort of third graders.
Other questions? Tracy?
In a past, in a past World's Best Workforce presentation, there was a decile chart that showed growth targets by decile. And in, at that time, the top deciles, so the 90th to 100th, and the 80th to 89th, were growing at faster rates and meeting their growth targets where the middle and lower deciles were not. Is that consistent with the information we have now, or has that changed?
So yes, we do have that similar pattern. We tend to see our highest achieving students hitting the growth targets at the highest rates. So that is a consistent pattern in the data.
Along the same kind of question, as we talk about the achievement gap and achievement integration, have you looked at the data at the elementary level versus middle school versus high school to see if we can intervene and help the kids in the elementary before we're trying to pitch them up in junior high tech schools?
So yes, we do look at the gap starting very early on. So one of the things I failed to mention to gentlemen here is that, you know, addressing the achievement gap, obviously, we want to be starting very early because it starts very, very early. And typically, in our system, not unlike other systems, that third grade achievement gap will persist to graduation. It's really difficult to see significant progress. You just don't see it. It's not common. I'm not saying it doesn't ever happen, and that it can't happen, but that it's very persistent. So targeting gap work early is really a good strategy. It's one that we're looking at.
And I think to your point also, one of the things we did do is, and the achievement and integration budget is, in the totality of the budget, is about $1 million of about $100 million budget. So, but when we looked at it this past year, as we planned where we allocating resources, we were very intentional at putting about 200,000 of it. So about 25% of it went specifically to the six elementary schools so we could increase the math and reading support, right to your point. You know, when we say we're trying to read well by third grade, and some of that money was not going specifically to elementary, then we were, we're not going to hit our target at the rate we want to.
So also talking about that decile information, is it also accurate to say that it's still about 50 to 60% of the kids that are at that higher 70-plus percent decile level? We've got the middle, that's about 20, 25%, meaning between 40 and 60% decile, and we've got about 25% lower than the 40% decile, meaning that we do not have a normal bell curve. When you hear middle, you're thinking normal bell curve with 60% of the kids in it. That's, is that true, that it's not the case in Edina? When you look at that decile level where you're saying you're getting most of the growth, most of that growth isn't where most of our kids are? Over to the right.
So I can't speak to the exact numbers tonight, but I can tell you that we do have what we call the blue whale in Edina, especially at the early elementary on the MAP. It's a very narrow measure of math and reading. Our kids do very well on that assessment because they're instructed in very, very good ways. And so you do see, we have lots of kids on the high end instead of a more normal distribution. That's true.
You just said that that was true for the young kids, like they have a young kids that they get older in Edina?
Nope. We still have it with six, seven, and eight, it's just not as pronounced, but it's still, you still see that pattern. You'll still see higher achieving kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so we don't use that same measure at the high school level. We, we kind of, it kind of uses, loses its usefulness as kids age up and start doing more complex learning tasks. The MAP is not really a very good measure as kids age up and get into that more complex learning. So therefore, we don't give it at the high school, so we don't have that picture to corroborate, I guess.
Have we followed up on last year's third graders? I know there was a lot of talk about how we had a tough, our scores last year for third grade, and now they're fourth graders. Have we followed up to see if we're getting the growth that we need in that cohort that we had earlier numbers last year? Well, I do know that 80% of the fourth graders met or exceeded the expected growth
target on the MCA. And I don't recall what it is for the MAP, I'd have to get back to you. But I do know that there is, we're paying close attention to that cohort, third to fourth grade, so the fourth grade cohort you're talking about.
I'm looking at them, and they went, last year, they were 70% in the MCA reading third grade, and then the 2019 number for fourth grade is 71.8, so 1.8.
Proficiency. It's a different test.
Yeah, it is a different, the fourth grade reading test is a very difficult reading test. It's probably the most difficult elementary MCA. So it's a different task.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
So the next item is discussion, but we have our auditors who are kind of waiting for a later time period under action. I'm wondering if the board is okay if we put the financial audit next to precede discussion so the auditors could then go home. So we got a motion from Matt, all those in favor of amending the agenda to put the financial audit next, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. So I do hope the auditor is here. So I saw him in the back, yes. So now can I get a motion to approve the audit for 2019 as well as to approve a transfer Just so you know, we didn't move you up so that you could lengthen your presentation.
Duly noted.
Good evening, Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, and members of the board. Tonight, we present the District Financial Audit Report. Bill Lauer from MMKR is the principal on the audit, and he has some information to share with the board, and then any questions that board members may have. Bill.
Good evening. I do very much appreciate your being able to move me up a little earlier this evening, and I will do my best to go through this quickly. As we have already shared a lot of this information at the Finance Committee meeting, I'm going to kind of forward ahead if you have questions, feel free to stop me as I'm going through it. The first thing I will do is make sure that I clarify to you what our role is as auditor. The primary documents that you received in your board packet tonight is the district's annual financial statements for the year ended June 30 of 2019. All of the data and disclosures that are included in that report are the responsibility of district's management. We provide the opinion at the front of that based on our audit as to whether it fairly presents the district's financial position and results for the year under audit. Because the district earns more than $750,000 in federal grants each year, you're also subject to what's referred to as a single audit of those federal awards expenditures. As part of both of those processes, we test your internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, and you're also subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. Then you also received a separate report on the district's extracurricular student activity reports. As we discussed in the Finance Committee, this is going to be the last year that's going to be reported separately due to an accounting change. Those are now going to be under board control and in your general fund going forward. This year, we did issue an opinion on the receipts and disbursements in those accounts and also a report letter on the controls and compliance for those, for that audit. As far as the results, once again, we were able to issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements, the highest opinion that we can give. We had no internal control or compliance issues to report as far as the district's financial reporting process. We also had no findings this year in your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. As far as the federal single audit, we issued a clean opinion on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, that they're fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. We also had a clean report there as far as your compliance, internal controls and compliance with federal regulations as far as spending those dollars. One of the things we do during our process is to follow up on any findings that were given in the prior year's audit. You did have one Minnesota legal compliance finding in 2018 as far as timeliness of payment of claims. We did test that again this year in 2019 and found that all claims that we tested were paid timely, so that was not an ongoing issue in 2019. And then on your student activity accounts, as I mentioned, this is a separate report. It's reported on a regulatory basis of accounting as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. We do only opine on the reported receipts because you don't have controls. These are student activity accounts kept out in the buildings. They don't go through your regular financial business office. So we do limit our opinion there. We did have one compliance issue to report here. One of the receipts that we tested was not deposited timely in accordance with the regulations that the Department of Education puts out for overseeing these accounts. You're supposed to be depositing these within seven days, not holding them over a weekend. We found one that was held for more than seven days. But that was it from a compliance standpoint. So again, all in all, a very clean audit. Just briefly, I will go through a few of the very high-level numbers we discussed at the Finance Committee. The district's general fund is its primary operating fund. This graph shows your financial position at the end of the year for the last decade in terms of your total fund balance and cash balances at the end of the year. You had about $32 million in cash at year end, and you had a total fund balance of about $14 million. And that was an increase of $450,000, roughly $3.5 million better than the fund balance projected in your final budget. This table shows how you report that fund balance, the different components of it. Non-spendable fund balances in your case is prepaid expenditures, you had about $31,000 there. You have about $2.6 million at the end of the year in restricted fund balances. These are mostly restrictions, state restrictions under UFRs. That $2.6 million in your case is almost entirely capital-related, operating capital, long-term facility maintenance. Then the unrestricted fund balances are things that you control internally. Commitments are made by formal board action. You've got a little over $1 million that's committed for cash flow purposes. Assignments are internal earmarks, not as formal as commitments, so these are things you essentially set aside funds for. The majority of that $3.5 million in your case is aside for retirement benefits. And then the unassigned fund balance, just under $7 million at the end of 2019, is available for spending for any purpose. That is what relates to your fund balance policy is how you look at that unassigned fund balance as a percent of your annual expenditures. That represented about 6% or 6.1% of your annual expenditures for the year. The largest revenue that you receive in the general fund is state aid. The biggest piece of that is general education aid. You've gotten about a 2% increase in your per pupil formula funding for each of the last five fiscal years. The other thing that drives that formula is the number of students that the district serves for aid. After applying the waitings, you serve pupil units of about 9,200 students for 2019 fiscal year. That was a drop of about half a percent in your student population for aid from the previous General fund revenues for 2019 were just over $117 million in total. You were over budget by about 1, 1.5%, a little under $2 million. Almost all of that was in what's shown here in the other category. Those are revenues like donations, student fees, investment earnings that you budget very conservatively because they're nonrecurring and a little hard to predict. Revenues went up about $6 million from the prior year, about 5.5%. About half of that was due to an increase in your voter-approved property tax operating referendum, and about half of that came in additional state aid through the general education. education formula and special education funding. On the expenditure side, you spent just over $113 million in the general fund in 2019. Spending was under budget by about $3.8 million, roughly 2.5%, but the big reason for that was really related to capital spending, somewhat the timing of projects, but the larger change there was your long-term facility maintenance revenue. All comes into the general fund, but then it can be spent either from the general fund or for larger projects, it gets spent out of your building construction fund. So, you spent, you transferred about $3.2 million from the general fund over to that building construction fund. It was spent there instead of in the general fund. Expenditures went up by about $5.5 million, roughly 5% from the year before. The majority of that was salaries and benefits. Briefly, your other operating funds, the food service special revenue fund ended the year with a fund balance of about $1.1 million. That was roughly 37% of your annual expenditures in that fund, which are about $2 million. Your fund balance went up in that fund by $94,000. That was roughly $300,000 better than projected. About a third of that variance was additional revenue through meal sales over what you projected, and about 2/3 of that was cost savings mainly in the purchase service area. Your community service fund balance ended the year at about $930,000, or about 12% of your annual expenditures in that fund, which are around $8 million. Fund balance there went up by $192,000, right in line with what you projected, which was an increase of about $189,000. And the final slide that I have shows the very first financial statement in your statements is a entity-wide statement of net position. This takes all of your fund-based information, converts it to a full accrual basis, so it brings in all the long-term assets and liabilities that aren't reported in the funds, and gives you a longer-term look at your financial position and the change in financial position. The top portion of this presentation kind of walks you through how you get from the $44 million in total fund balances in the funds we just discussed to a deficit net position of about $42 million. You've got about $260 million, excuse me, roughly of capital assets. You've got about $210 million of outstanding debt. Bond certificates of participation, capital leases that you issued to finance those assets. And then the majority of the rest of that liability there is pension and OPEB liabilities, other post-employment benefits, so long-term employee benefits, which is mainly why you're in that deficit net position. And the bulk of that relates to two statewide pension plans, PERA and TRA, where each district and city and everyone that participates in those plans has allocated a portion of the statewide plan under funding, and you have to report that on your entity-wide financial statement. So, this doesn't impact your fund, financial statements at all, or how you pay for or finance those liabilities, but it is something that you do have to report when you get to this level. As you can see, your total net position improved by almost $30 million from 2018 to 2019, and about $25 million of that was due to change improvement in the funding levels of those two statewide pension plans. The rest of it, a lot of it came in your net investment in capital assets. Generally, that is a fairly stable number. It's based on how quickly you're depreciating your capital assets versus how quickly you're paying your debt back, but your district does have a capital levy that you passed through a referendum a few years ago, so you are adding capital assets without having to add new debt, so you're seeing that net investment in capital assets rise a little more quickly than you have in the past. So, I think that was everything I was going to cover. I tried to hurry as quickly as I could. Questions on any of that, or anything you wanted me to go into in more detail?
I'll just make this statement quickly, that I think the district did an excellent job restoring the capital fund balance above the 6% level that the board set as a target, and this resulted also in the top credit rating within the state, and this is a very clean bill of health from an audit perspective. So, a year after implementing new accounting systems and having a new finance director, this is an excellent result that the district and administration should be proud of, so thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving the transfer of funds from the general fund to the ECFE and for approving the statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is the school calendars. Brian and Randy, you are up.
Is it good? Okay, there we go. All right, Chair, Board Chair Wallen Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening an update from the Calendar Committee. We do have members of the Calendar Committee who joined us up here as well as in the audience. I see Mr. Wolfbauer back there. Are there any others? Thank you for being here this evening. Why don't we just go down the role here and just introduce ourselves. Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent.
Randy Smosel, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Angela Ruby, Teacher at Countryside.
Jill Ziering, Parents of Kids at Countryside.
Patty Fryer, Teacher at Highlands.
Thank you. I also see Lisa Masika back there, too. She also served, is one of our administrative reps as well. All right, we have a few slides here. If we could advance the slide. Somewhere, somebody might be able to advance it. There we go. There we go. All right, so just quickly, we'll highlight board parameters, stakeholder input, and then the design of the calendar. All right, next slide. Yeah, we can go straight to that document. I think Zach's got us back there. There we go. All right, so this is a, should be a familiar document. This is one that the Board approved earlier in the fall to give the committee parameters for, what are those, legal and contractual pieces that we need to be aware of, and then additional pieces over to the right? What should the results of the calendar be? And so, there's 11 letters there. You can't see them very well in this particular slide, but there are 11 items. One of those items is around inclement weather days, and at the time that the parameters were provided to the committee, we had not completed all of the steps for training our staff for the e-learning days, and we have since completed that training and have approval from the Board on the e-learning days, on the days where we have inclement weather. So, I'm not sure that that particular item continues to be a need for us because we'll be able to count all those days as learning days through the e-learning initiative that we're practicing this year. All right. Next slide. Or, yeah, just, yeah, there you go. So, the process, so we've had four committee meetings. Our first meeting, we reviewed the parameters item by item. We also looked at the previous survey tools that we, that the committee has used in the past to get, to design and narrow our questions for the survey to our stakeholders. We then came back, finished the survey design, and then our third meeting, we analyzed the results that came back from the survey, and then in our last meeting, we mapped out the calendar. And so, we are here today to present our best option, and I will pass it over to Randy to talk through the input that we received from our survey.
Thank you, Brian. As Zach loads that up, we'll speak a little bit about the survey that we gave to stakeholders. We had an eight-question survey that we created. The survey was pretty straightforward. We talked through some of the different areas of the calendar discussion that we felt the committee needed some feedback around, and we modeled it after a previous survey, but there was a little bit of tweaking in terms of the questions we asked the stakeholders. So, the, we don't have all of the questions up here, but we have a few that we're highlighting. So, from what perspective are you responding to the survey? I feel like I'm getting a little feedback here.
Yes.
Did you turn that one off? Perfect, thank you. So, from the, what perspectives are you responding to the survey? So, we can see, we had a variety of different stakeholders, from district-wide staff to early childhood staff. We had elementary staff participate, middle school and high school staff, early childhood parents, parents of elementary children, parents of middle school and high school children. And on this slide, it kind of breaks out the numbers and the percentages of each. I think we had about 700 staff that responded, and the remaining numbers were from parents in the community, about 2,900 responses to the survey overall. One of the questions we asked was about, yes, one of the questions we asked is about what kind of options would you prefer, given kind of a forced-choice requirement? Would you rather have a longer holiday break, typical holiday break, and a shorter Thanksgiving Day break, or vice versa? And as we saw from the data, about 72% of the respondents said, "We would rather have a shorter Thanksgiving break and a longer winter break." So, that is in reference to the two weeks' winter break and then having a Thanksgiving break that would be about three days long. We go to the next slide. The school district has offered late starts and early releases in the past. What type of support would you provide for these different choices? And we did have a lot of discussion in the committee about the benefits of late starts and the benefits of early releases for professional learning opportunities and looking at data for students with the teachers, and we had a lot of discussion about, you know, which of those are preferable. And one of the things that we saw from this calendar survey data is that when we looked at the data holistically, there was certainly support for very specific items or options that we had presented. So, for example, this one, most of the support was provided around early releases. And I'll ask Angela to maybe speak to what that means or how that plays out at the elementary classroom level, and how an early release is different than a late start.
So, from a staff perspective, early releases are preferred to late start, and you understand that the early release would be that students would leave the school day two hours prior to their normal dismissal time, and then a late start, would they, they would arrive two hours beyond where they would normally start. So, there are really three reasons that kind of shine as why early releases are preferred. The first being that elementary students really thrive on routine. So, the morning routines that we establish in our classrooms really help the students get off to a predictable right foot, so to speak. And when we have late starts, it really throws some of our students for a loop, and it's really hard for those kids to settle into learning and have a productive day. So, that's the first reason. And then the second reason, from a staff perspective, when we gather, our thoughts are always on the students' needs for the day. So, when we spend our staff development time in the morning, we have a tendency to be a little bit mentally distracted by the upcoming school day and what our students need to learn and do that day, whereas when we have early dismissal, we've already wrapped up our student day and can more fully rest our attention and focus on the staff development opportunity that we're given. And then the third one is, again, from the staff perspective, for those people who want to continue the conversation that maybe had begun during the opportunity, or wrap up discussion, or go a little deeper, ask questions, develop next steps, we have time to do that when it's an early release without having to rush off and have a hard stop to begin our student day.
Thank you, Angela, for sharing that. We recognize that's a perspective of an educator in the system. It's not necessarily a perspective of all of the families or the parents, but when we, again, looked at the data, we saw that there was clearly a dominant selection for that particular item. And then in question four, we said, "In terms of frequency of late starts and early releases, which model do you prefer?" And one of the discussions we had was about making the late starts and early releases more frequent but less time, so keeping the amount of time the same, but maybe doing them a little bit more frequently or periodically throughout the school year. And we saw that at this time, there really wasn't as much appetite for that across our stakeholders, but there was support for continuing, given these choices, there was support to continue them as four-day, two-hour early releases or late starts. And then another question that we asked was about how we would plan for making up weather day, emergency days. And as Brian mentioned, at the time when we were constructing this, we had not yet finalized the plan for exactly what that's going to look like at the elementary level. And now that we have our e-learning plan in place and we are training staff at the elementary level, we've already trained staff at the secondary level on how to prepare for that, we feel like this is an unnecessary item to address because our e-learning plan will in fact address that. So, with that, those are our survey results. Those aren't all the results, but those were just some highlights of some of the results that informed the committee. And again, the survey wasn't a vote. It was input gathered from stakeholders so that the committee could take that input back and look at everything holistically and digest that input, and then bring forward to you this evening what the committee felt were the best options for how to lay this out in a calendar year. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Brian on how this all comes together.
All right, thank you, Randy and Angela, for those comments. So, the draft that we're about to show you then is a culmination of the input and information from the parameters, the contractual and statute pieces, as well as the survey responses. So, Zach, if you can queue up the school calendars. And I'll speak generally to the highlights, and if there are any specific questions that the Board has, we're happy to speak to and respond to any of those questions. If you could scroll to the next one, the 2021, we'll start with the first year. Thank you, Zach. So, the winter break, as Randy mentioned, in this first year of the calendar will be two full weeks. That's a, that was something that we were able to meet in the first year. You'll also see that in November, on Election Day, we have a non-student contact day there. That was, there's a lot of feedback coming from the community around not having school in session when there are elections, and so that will be a day for parents and teacher conferences for the district. The other piece around early releases, we're moving to all early releases. One of those days will stay attached to the day before a break. You'll see in October MEA, that the 13th, there is the first of the four early release dates, and that is attached to the MEA break. The other three are located in, am I looking at the wrong one? Oh, just, yeah, there we go. All right, so it was actually loaded correctly. Thank you. So, scroll, let's scroll down a little bit there. Can we scroll down? Yeah. Yeah. So, it's the 14th. There's the first date instead of the 13th in the previous calendar, but the Election Day is still, you'll still see that piece there in that lighter green, that we were able to honor that in both years. So, the winter break, the early releases, and then the other part of the early releases is that we didn't want to have all of those attached to a winter break so that the focus on professional development was prioritized and as, yeah. And then, spring breaks. One of the considerations we have for spring breaks is the sweet spot between the state tournaments for winter sports ending and also the MCA testing window, and trying to make sure that we put that in a spot that advantages teaching and learning, and also that students who may be participating in and also that students who may be participating in state tournaments wouldn't be penalized that that, that their tournament is happening during the spring break window. And I don't know that most districts have that to contend with, but the streak that we're on right now, who knows what could happen in, in winter sports at that time. The other piece that I would offer is that, one thing that we wrestle with as a committee is that there are certain, not certain, but there are cultural celebrations that happen throughout our community. And as much as possible, we try to be aware of those. We do have a blackout date calendar that our school principals and our staff use to try to be as culturally sensitive to those dates throughout the year. In the, in the first year of this calendar, 2020, 2021, there were some natural alignments to some of those celebrations that happened throughout the year. In the second year, it was much tougher. And so I'm just acknowledging that, and that's something that we want to strive for. We do have some ideas around meeting with some of our stakeholder groups and working on that blackout date calendar to make sure that our educators have that in the spring, and that they're able to plan around those pieces for the upcoming school year. And I think I'll pause, I'll pause there. Any questions?
Could you talk to us about, anyway, could you talk to us about the, the election days? And I know, I mean, I do realize, obviously, in 2020, it will be a big Election Day long runs, but then the next year will be another just school or election, and so typically not that long of lines. So what, what is the, the feedback there? And why are we going down this road of, because I'm assuming the consistency going forward, where we just don't have school on Thursday, Tuesday, or November?
So we, we received some pretty strong messaging from community members, from parents, as well as staff about guests and visitors to our school buildings on Election Days. And so there was, there was quite a bit of, of agreement and excitement around not having that be a student contact day, not just from the committee members, but from many different stakeholder groups, parents and staff. So I'm not sure if Mary Woody, our communications lead, could speak to how many messages we received regarding not having a student contact day on Election Day, but there was, there were quite a few.
I know the election officials from the city had asked us to look into that, as other school districts are doing the same thing, just manage the disruption of people walking out of the school during those Election Days.
Then my, my other question was around MEA. And I know that there's starting to be some talk in the other districts about possibly moving away from having MEA, because I believe it, which it's going to go to only a Friday conference.
Thursday.
Oh, only Thursday conference. So is that even come up for discussion yet, as to if our district would look at changing things, or is that still years out?
We certainly spoke about that, and we did have representation from our EME group that, that spoke to this shift. What isn't clear is the practice around it, and what districts will shift to, how they'll shift to align to that. And I think so we're so early in it that we don't have a precedent necessarily established. And I think we, we, we didn't feel comfortable setting a precedent.
And then it, it looks like Christmas break, excuse me, winter break is, is 10 and 9, so based on getting the right number of days. My main question was actually around spring break.
Sure.
And I saw that we did do significantly earlier the, the second year. And I know that in the past, we've actually had some complaints about changing spring break. We used to try to hit that magic last week of March slash running into April. And, and then, because we had done a survey where some parents were like, it would be nice to have it earlier in, in March, but as you said, sports and other things that are happening, that's typically difficult to do. So I was just curious why we moved it up to second year to that, that third week versus the fourth week of March.
Thank you for that perspective. I think when we looked at the survey data, we had two different weeks where we had the green light, and this was one of the two weeks. And because we had it a little bit later the year before, we went with our earlier date there because it didn't naturally align to any of the other cultural celebrations that were happening. If we had it a later week, and so since there wasn't that alignment, we thought, okay, well, we were kind of split there with spring breaks, well, why don't we have this one a bit earlier? After a conversation with Troy Stein this afternoon, that, that latter week, the week after, may be a better week because the Saturday of the second year, it would be the state championship game for boys' basketball. So we could potentially, if we had a boys' basketball team in the state championship game, it could impede on their, their access to the full spring break, so.
I wasn't referring to a particular preference. I just know that, that parents had expressed in the past that it's nice to know, as they're planning ahead, that it's just always that kind of last week. But otherwise, great job on the calendar, you guys. I think it's great. I mean, it's, it's very consistent between the two years outside of that, that one thing I just mentioned. And we are looking at the pre-Labor Day start, but I think you guys did excellent work. And, and my last question would be around, are you looking at a rolling calendar? Did that discussion happen so that parents don't have to get to this point where it's December and they're waiting to plan for the next fall?
Yeah, we're looking back at one of our parents who introduced that concept, so thank you so much. Yeah, so that, that is a proposal that we would have after this one is approved in December. We would recommend having a rolling calendar from there on. So we're always 18 months out in advance, in that we don't have the situation that we're currently in where folks aren't aware of what we're having after June 30th for this upcoming year. And we, we really wanted to honor the two weeks in both years. However, the way that New Year's Day falls on that weekend in 2022, it's the Monday after, so being able to keep all of that in that extra would have had us coming back for a short week, that second week in June, and that just, we didn't, we didn't want to do that.
It totally makes sense.
Sure.
That if there's going to be years where there's going to be less than 10 days occasionally because of the way the calendar is.
Sure.
I think, like I said, I think you've been good at this topic.
All right. All right. There are no further.
Yeah, can I go back to the question or what you alluded to about maybe the challenge around state basketball? And is there, I guess, do you have a recommendation that we keep spring break the same week? Or do you have a recommendation that we alter the calendar to move it so there aren't any conflicts with any sort of athletics or extracurriculars?
So I think that in the first year, where it's located, it certainly aligns to some of the cultural celebrations of members within our community. For example, Passover aligns, and so that's how we really landed in that week. And because it wasn't as advantageous, it wasn't close enough Passover in the second year, then it made it a little bit, that, that consideration was kind of not as front and center as the other pieces that we talked about in terms of academic, the MCA testing season, as well as the, the state competition. I think, I think having it be that same week has a lot of merit. It does give it more space from the state tournament. And so I think, I don't think we, I don't think we have any opposition to that, to that latter week at all.
If it didn't have any of the dependencies on any sort of cultural issues, and it would benefit from not having an issue with any sort of athletics or extracurriculars, I just didn't know if it would be an option, or if that would be a recommendation that you guys would have, would be to approve the calendar pending moving that one week. And I don't know, I don't know how any of my other board members feel about it, or if you guys are like, no, we just want to keep it. I just wanted to get your opinion on that matter.
So one of the things that was also taken into consideration for the spring breaks is on the survey, the two weeks were pretty closely aligned for the results of when people wanted them. So we thought to meet the needs of each group, we would do one earlier one year and one later the second year.
And a couple of questions. Actually, first on that, is there, is there concern about where it lies within the semester, within a term that impacts where it would go? Is there a better natural breakpoint? And because we vary when we start the school year, that that might dictate where spring break goes? I'll start that one.
I think that was more of our discussion around the semester break, as that was one of the items in the parameters. In terms of spring break and that natural fall for, because we're semester-long, I mean, we certainly have two nine-week stretches, and so having it that latter week would get us pretty much to the halfway point of the semester so that they would come back and have the nine weeks left of semester. So that would, that would put it there. But we didn't have formal discussion on the placement of it in relationship to where it lands in the semester, only in relationship to the MCAs.
My other question was about the blackout days, and it's more, I guess, about the practice we have. Do we have a consequence-free type environment when somebody explains they won't be in school for reasons of conscience that, you know, we're particularly flexible with regard to working ahead or catching up without consequence, and maybe even not trying to schedule the most exciting guest on that day, that sort of thing?
Yeah, there, there were a few perspectives represented there, and I've heard Principal Beaton mention it several times, that we absolutely want to make sure that we're sensitive to those celebrations. And I think what may be more clear this year is also the day that students return from a celebration, that there isn't a major exam or substantive assessment due on that day they return, because we want to make sure that they're able to be present and really fully enjoy and embrace the, the celebration that they're a part of. Yep.
So a couple of quick questions. On the 2021, 2022 calendar, you've got final exams the 19th through the 21st, but then you have no school on the 21st. So is that supposed to be the 18th to the 20th for finals? This is the 2021, 2022 calendar. Looks like final exams go to a.
Zach, can you pull up the, the calendars again? There were a couple of edits since that first one. So if you're looking at the most recent one that was loaded to Board Book, that may have been corrected. So are we talking first semester or second semester?
January 21st.
The orange date is a no teacher, no day.
It's one of our dated days.
But then it's listed as a finals day.
Okay. That's a typo. That's a typo.
So maybe the final should be 18 to the 20th.
Correct.
And then the follow-up question is, the prior year, it's the prior week for finals. So it looks like one year has a longer first semester than the other year. And so, which of course really means a shorter second semester. And I didn't count days or anything like that, but was there some intentionality in terms of having a longer year in the second year of the calendar?
Yeah, that was it, that was not intentional, and we did not have that conversation, so we'll, we'll have to make sure that it's the same in both years.
So I know that with the spring semester, for the single semester AP classes, there's always a concern about whether the semester is too short to get the material in. And of course, the flip is, for those people who have finals, like right after they get back from school, they probably would rather have the extra week, particularly with the Monday off. But, so if you can just take a look at those years and see if there's any thought on the different week that the each first semester ends.
Thank you. That's why it never hurts to have another set of eyes on these.
Any other questions? Twice, thank you very much. Next, let's wait for everybody to go. Next item is the substitute teacher management system.
So we will be brief and then able to elaborate at, at your request. So again, Board Chair Wallen Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, members of the board, here to talk about a concern we have with our subsystem. We do have some teachers in the house. I'm sure they would testify some frustration as well in terms of our current subsystem and its fill rate. Currently, we have one staff person in our human resources department who is recruiting, hiring, onboarding, orienting, and maintaining this pool for our sites. And, and a lot of time is going into supporting this particular process for the district. Subs are critical to support our staff who are ill, who if they're out ill, or in order for them to access timely professional development opportunities throughout the year. We, we would like to suggest that we request for proposals to determine if there's a vendor who can assist and provide much-needed support and increase our fill rate capacity for subs in, in our district. So this would allow us to reallocate the time and resource of our current staff person in this area to help us with some recent legislation around the wage theft law. And there's a lot of implications in how that particular law is rippling out to districts across the state. So that's sort of our high-level view. John has a few documents he'd like to talk through in terms of some cost pieces related to this and some potential savings that we could have with a potential vendor.
Thanks, Brian. You have a number of documents in your board packet. One of them is basically a cost analysis, which is going over a summary of the prior worksheets that are subsequent there to the cost analysis. And I'll just go over those very briefly. We believe that we will get responses in this RFP that will result in some hard cost savings over what we spent last year in our substitutes. We also believe that there is a fairly substantial amount, and one of the things that Brian was referring to was repurposing that person that is responsible for subbing in the HR office to the wage theft law. So we believe that there will be substantial soft cost savings and also some hard cost savings with this proposal. We believe that we'll get at least two vendors that will respond to this proposal, and we will send this out if the board approves it tonight as soon as possible, for possible approval by the board at their December meeting. And I can go over any of the sheets you want me to, if you want to go into more detail with questions on, on those sheets.
So are you saying that with the wage theft law, that if we don't do this, that we'll have, to have additional FTE time to meet the requirements of that law?
No, we are spread thin trying to meet that, and we also have some turnover in the department. And so it's, it's proving to be quite the task.
Just thinking, so, I mean, that suggests that if, if this doesn't work out, that you might be seeking additional FTE support.
Well, we currently are spreading that across the team, and, and we're distributing that labor of love across, across the department. But this would allow us to, to have a person really locked in on that in particular.
So just for clarification, the driver on this is operational, that it's hard to fill substitute roles, and you want to work with a vendor who dedicates more of their time to doing this?
Yes.
Okay. And cost savings is secondary, or it's a nice benefit to this?
Absolutely. Nice benefit.
Okay. Good, thanks.
We talked about this at HR, correct?
Yep.
Anyway, we, I know we talked about this at HR, because we wanted to make sure that we were still ensuring that we get the best substitute teachers when the district is involved, and that, ensuring that the company, whatever company we end up using, is, is guaranteeing that for us, and that, you know, that they're, they're, that this does not take away anything from the district, but hopefully add some help, but, you know, hopefully as zero, or cost savings. But those, those were some of our main concerns, is that we wanted to make sure that we were still getting the best, which is what we're used to.
Could you explain to me a little bit how the process works as far as a teacher or administrator actually selecting a sub? Because I know certain teachers might have certain preferences and have worked with subs in the past, and their students are used to having specific subs. Is, will we have consistency from that perspective, or is it more like going to a temp agency? Is, will we have consistency from that perspective, or is it more like going to a temp agency where it's only whoever's, I mean, I think it's wonderful from the perspective that we'll have more to choose from, I just worry about, it's part of subbing and teaching is a personal relationship as well, will we lose any of that?
Great question. So, in, in terms of the quality of service, there are several popular vendors that are out there. When I was in, employed in St. Paul Public Schools, we use Teachers On Call, I think Hopkins uses Teachers On Call. And what winds up happening is that, for example, we have an existing sub pool, so that group would be grandfathered into and automatically rolled into our subs. So, all of our current subs would, would continue to have, be eligible for student, for our staff to select those candidates, and then what winds up emerging is that you get substitute teachers who enjoy working in certain school environments, and so, so those relationships start to form and expand. And that pool is broad, it's a, it's a deeper pool, and we're able to, to draw on more eligible licensed staff that our current pool doesn't provide us.
John, can you just talk a little bit about the process with the RFP? So, this is a discussion item, so after this informational item, is it your intent to put this out for RFP and then bring it back for board approval in January? Are you going to have them approve the RFP in December, then post the RFP?
Yeah, it was my understanding that we'd ask for approval tonight for the, to place the RFP out, receive that back in time, so that we could do an analysis of the vendors that responded, and then bring that back to the board on December 16th for a potential implementation in January.
So, do we need approval of an RFP, or is this more of an informational item for the board?
Well, I think, I think as we talked about it in HR Committee, because of the magnitude of this amount, that it would probably be prudent to have the board approve going out for RFP. It's, we're talking a million dollars, even a little bit more than a million dollars, so that's why we brought it to the board tonight, and would like to seek formal approval from the board to go out for RFP on this.
So, and, so do you have, I mean, is it time-sensitive, that you need the approval tonight because you're trying to get this for the start of a new semester?
Not necessarily. It, it will dovetail probably fairly nicely with that, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think our teachers, and I've heard from a number of them frustrated that they haven't been able to access some of the, the timely professional development opportunities that we have front-loaded in the district, and so, as, as soon as we're able to have a vendor emerge that meets the criteria that we have, we want to be able to, to roll as, as quickly as possible.
So, are there other questions? Because if you're going to want approval, we would need a motion to approve it. This has been said as a discussion item, so our normal protocol is discussion followed by action the next month. We have occasionally varied from that on issues.
Do they need approval to go for RFP?
That's, that was the question, whether you're actually...
If you want for RFP, but now...
Because if you send it for RFP, do we have to accept the bid?
No, we do not have to accept the bid. We can reject any and all bids and waive any irregularities if we like.
So, you can send it out for an RFP and then come back in December with a motion to approve the RFP and the, basically the response to it?
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
That would be a little more consistent with our process.
Yep, that would work.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before we get to the next item, I'd like to just take a 10-minute recess. We've been going for two and a half hours.
Five minutes?
Can we do five?
Okay, we'll do five. We'll do a five-minute recess.
Check, 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 check.
All right. Welcome back, everybody. Hello. Everybody grab seats, quiet down. All right, we are back, and recess is over. We are next on to policy updates. Amir.
Okay, these are the ones on the discussion side. We have four policies. 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IPEs from school ground. That, very minimal actual change, change in the order of the words from officer to crisis teams, the crisis team comes first, is more of just a tone, but not an actual substantive change. 624, online learning options, relatively minor edits. There's a new clarifying appendix, some grade level clarification, and it's worth noting that for online courses that have a fee, the district will pay for it if it fits within your idea of a full schedule, but if you're trying to do something in addition to a full schedule, then the student would pay. And if you wanted the district to pay for it, you would have to then actually drop one of the courses that currently made up your full load to, to make it fit, so you're getting the same educational quantity of other students. And then 711, student activities accounting. In compliance with a change in statute, the school board is taking charge of financing for some clubs that it didn't previously. Some were maybe more informal, or had a history of just being managed outside of the district, and that's relatively common, and putting those under a board's purview now is required. And so, that'll be relatively common as we go around the state. And then 720, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources, merely dollar numbers changing, and that's from statute.
All right, any questions? Okay, on to the next discussion item, which is administrative presentation on impact on changes to policy 601.
So, I'm just going to ask our leadership team to come forward, who's presenting? Chris and... Gets too crowded up there. So, just to start with a little background, policy 601 has taken on a bit of a different journey to tonight's meeting than, than other policies. Administration has had some limited interaction with, with the board around this policy, and so we weren't present when that policy was drafted, but, and the board has reviewed this language as it was presented by Director Jones, Director Michelson, and Director Garby on September 16th in a work session, October 14th in a board meeting, and then tonight on November 18th. Director, we've had several discussions about the policy in policy committee. The board has also had, had Erica, Ellen Berg, Lenny Wallen-Friedman, and Amir Garby meet with me and Randy to determine further process with 601, and, and how it would be informed by the administration. So, tonight's really the only opportunity we've had to give some input to policy 601. And the, so, the background for this presentation, as I'm charged with as the superintendent, is to provide you with, with the impact to this, to this policy, and, and really to provide the, the board with the, with the implications of what it would mean to implement this policy. Tonight's presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about the impact on the curriculum development costs, we're also going to talk about the, the timeline of curriculum review, the background, give us some, give you some background on our advanced learner, learners, and, and also talk about the talent development framework. We'll also have our elementary, middle school, and high school leadership talk about the impact this, this, this policy can have on the program. So, with that, I'm going to start by talking a little bit, talking about the administrative recommendation, just to begin, so you have some, something to attach this to, but we're recommending that the school board work with the administration and the teacher representatives to rewrite policy 601 to align with the state-aligned curriculum development cycles. Also, consideration of fiscal limitations, timelines for development, and alignment to the proposed K-12 talent development framework should be reconsidered to improve likelihood of implementation. So, as policy 601 is written, administration does not support the changes to policy 601. When we met with Amir, Lenny, and Erica, it was, I was asked to present this to legal counsel, and so Trevor Helmers has provided this background. I asked the board legal counsel to review and provide input on the policy. He, he did prepare an opinion that is protected by attorney-client privilege and may be reviewed by board members individually, but indicated that I could share the following points publicly. The board has the legal rule on legal issues surrounding this type of program. Similarly, there are a number of practical issues that would arise, which should be reviewed and considered before approving the policy. So, I do have his opinion, and if board members like to review that individually, let me know, and we can set, set up a time for you to review that. So, this is a, our...
John, could you read that again, please?
Sure.
When did you get me?
I got this on Friday. So, I asked the board's legal counsel to review and provide input on the policy. He prepared an opinion that is protected by the attorney-client privilege and may be reviewed by board members individually, but indicated that I could share the following points publicly. The board has the legal authority to make these changes, but there are a number of potential unintended consequences of enacting this policy that may lead to legal liability now and in the future. This would be the first program of its kind in the state, and thus no court has specifically reviewed or ruled on legal issues surrounding this type of program. Similarly, there are a number of practical issues that would arise, which should be reviewed and considered before approving the policy. So, I'm going to turn it over to, to Randy to begin talking about the implications of the policy.
Can you send that around?
This is not his.
Whatever opinion.
Is the opinion...
The opinion, I have the opinion in my office, you'll have to...
You want to get it in one of these terms?
Yes, I'll have to, I, you'll have to come in and review it, is what he wants.
No, for today.
Yeah.
For today.
What are you asking?
That, we're asking to see the opinion.
So, so the, I don't have the opinion here, so I have, I can provide it to you. What Trevor would like is for you to come into the office... What Trevor would like is for you to come into the office and review the opinion.
But how do we do that when we're in the middle of a board meeting where we're about to work on this?
I can, I don't, Chair, do you have any suggestions? I can...
I mean, if you've had the opinion since Friday, why weren't we not told that we could come in prior to that, prior to this meeting to review the opinion?
Yeah.
Yes, I could have come in today. Well, of course not.
Maybe we need to, another break, a five-minute break, we can read the opinion.
I mean, this just seems like it's coming out of left field.
So, we can take another 10-minute recess, so people can go read it, if that's what people want. I don't have an issue with that. Okay. We're in recess for 10 more minutes.
We could go to your office.
Yeah, I think, so, do you want to go into the conference room? Or do you want me to bring the opinion in here?